...and might not be left behind, but find a place to thrive, to be equipped for success. So we pray your blessings on this night. We are grateful for the privilege. We pray it in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will call the meeting to order. Let the record show, all board members are present. And we will begin with presentations, Amber.
I'd like to introduce Jane Johnson from Garfield Elementary School to introduce our pledge leader.
I am lucky enough to be the principal at Garfield and have Ashley Pacheco with us tonight. And her parents are Gerardo and Yasbel. And she is one of my fabulous fifth graders. I have to brag on her that she has been collecting canned goods and things to donate for families that need food. She's been bringing candy and prizes for our family fun night that's been coming up. She likes to help clean up the parks in the city. And so I'm very proud of her for that. When her mama goes to walk, she likes to teach her little brothers that it's important not to litter. And so she works on helping keep our parks in Enid clean, so I'm proud of her for that. But I'm also very, very proud of her that since October 1st, she has read and taken enough quizzes in AR that she's gained 20 points from October 1 till now. So she is reading like nobody's business. I'm very proud of her. And I'll let you lead us in the pledge after we get the flags in. Okay? This is Ashley.
Okay, with that, we'll have the presentation of colors.
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll let Kyle present the certificate, and then we'll let him just stay down there as we move on through the recognitions, because he'll have a few more to present here in just a minute.
You'll be busy this evening.
Yeah, go right ahead, Amber.
Next, I'll introduce Mr. Darrow, who has two very special guests from Enid High School.
These look like National Commended Scholars, National Merit Commended Scholars.
Very good, very good.
I just pulled that right off the top of my head. They just look like they should be.
This is David Cho.
And this is Reese Switzer. And as Dr. Floyd said, they are both National Merit Commended Students. They both rank the top 5% of the 1.6 million that apply in the National Merit Program this year. They're also both in the top 5 of the graduating class of 400. So we're very proud of them up to this point. They've done an excellent job. I'll talk a little bit about each one of them and let them talk a little bit about themselves. Reese has taken four AP classes at Enid High School, three classes, passed every one of them, every one of the AP classes. Currently taking Comp 1, correct? And has also competed, how many years in swimming? All four years in swimming?
All four years of swimming, yeah.
David has taken, let me see here, I know David's actually taken six AP classes this semester, and has a 4.22 GPA. And I've got you down, taken five AP classes so far. So you're gonna graduate with 11 AP classes. Truly amazing. And David's also played in the band for three years, has played varsity tennis for four years. What's that? Three years? Okay, I'm sorry. But this year, David's, his schedule is six AP classes and a seventh day off is varsity tennis. So obviously, we're very proud of these guys. They both excel in the classroom and athletically as well. But I'll let Reese go ahead and start, and then David next.
Well, I was recommended just to talk about my experience. And I will say, I've thoroughly enjoyed my experience at Enid High School. I've made a lot of great friends, including David. And as far as the AP and concurrent classes go, I really do feel like they have prepared me very well for my college experience, which, you know, next year, hopefully, going into college at some upper-level institution. I, you know, the atmosphere has been incredible with the new university center, which was, I believe, first opened my freshman year at the high school. Really had the great opportunity for us to learn and grow in the environment that we were provided with.
All right, let David go.
When I first came to Enid High School, I was like, this is a big school. So, but yeah, I slowly became like, I came to enjoy it because the students and the teachers are all accepting. And I feel like it's prepared for me, or me, for college now, now that I'm applying and everything. So I'm really thankful for that, and thankful for all the teachers and students.
Tell us what your plans are after high school.
I plan to go to college, but I'm not really sure where. But I know I want to do pre-med and hopefully go to medical school.
Mr. Switzer, what are your plans?
I'm looking to apply to four different colleges, including Stanford, Johns Hopkins, and I want to study psychology.
All right, very good. Let's give them a hand. Couple of our best and brightest there. We're very proud of you guys and wish you the best of luck.
Dr. Floyd, I thought Dudley looked smarter than David.
Yeah, he does. He does look a lot smarter just standing next to those guys. Yeah. Good job, guys. We're glad to have you. All right, next up, we have some state champions to recognize.
Absolutely. And it'll be very familiar faces, because they have received this honor in the past. We want to recognize this evening, the Pacer Girls Volleyball Team with Coach Liz Schirmack. They were recently named the Academic State Champions. And I believe we'll receive their award tomorrow. Is that correct? Tomorrow at the state tournament. So I'm gonna ask Coach to introduce her athletes. And then certainly, we're excited to recognize them all this evening.
Smart girls.
Yeah, we had a 3.974 GPA. We had 10 4.0s and a 3.8. So, I mean, the girls did a great job this year. We were the distinguish. We won the plaque from last year with that one. And we were the state champions about three, four years ago. So Enid's smart. So I'm gonna go on and introduce these girls for you. We have Elena Archer.
Make Bloom.
Molly Bloom.
Y'all step up there to where Kyle is, so he doesn't have to walk back and forth if she calls you.
Elizabeth Dillingham.
Grace Dillingham.
Ally Jackson.
Sarah Johnson.
Kayla Kelly.
Emily Peterson.
Gabriella Perez.
Heather Wilkinson. And I also have my two assistant coaches, Shannon Robinson and Paige Clemmie, with me this evening.
Well, it says a lot about what these girls do in the classroom. And I've seen them play. I know they work really hard on the court. And obviously, they work just as hard or harder in the classroom. And that's really what we hope for all of our students. And I think these young ladies have set a wonderful example for what students can do. You know, it is possible to be involved in extracurricular activities and still get it done in the classroom. And ladies, we want to say, we are extremely proud of you. Well done. Let's give them a hand, please. Group picture, y'all jump in there with them, coaches? All right, we've got a couple more. Let Amber lead us through the rest of this.
Yes. We also would like to recognize this evening, a wonderful community partner, Downtown Threads. Most of you know that last year and this year, they designed a t-shirt for Enid Public Schools, sold it during the month of August, and then donated a portion of the proceeds to the school district. This year, not only did they give us an almost $400 check from those proceeds, they also offered all 75 new teachers a coupon to come redeem it for an Enid Public Schools t-shirt, which was very meaningful to new teachers who are new to our community. And they said more than half came to the store to get that t-shirt. So one of the things that I loved most about their design this year is they actually developed this. And when they called me, they said, "These are the words we think of when we think of Enid Public Schools," which really made it meaningful. So tonight, we would like to recognize Downtown Threads, Amanda Munger and Angela Hermansky, and say thank you for your commitment and your support to Enid Public Schools.
Thank you, ladies. It's always wonderful to have very supportive community members that help our schools along the way in our school district. And there's a prime example right there. We're very appreciative. Thank you, ladies.
Helping spread that Big Blue spirit too.
There you go, go Big Blue.
Our final recognition is someone who is very near and dear to this district and does a tremendous job. This last week, last week was actually School Lunch Week. And we wanted to recognize the Child Nutrition Program for the hard work they do every day to make sure that our children have the meals to keep them going through the day. And we've asked Kelly Craig, our director, to join us to represent the Child Nutrition Program. And I also want to share with you that this year, Kelly is the president of the School Child Nutrition Association of Oklahoma. So not only is she making sure that our children have what they need here in Enid, she's making sure that's happening across the state. So we're happy to recognize Kelly and to recognize our Child Nutrition Department.
Kelly Craig, come on down. About 30 minutes. Acceptance speech prepared?
No, no, thank you, thank you. It's really an honor to do this. And we have a really good staff at Enid Public Schools Child Nutrition. And it's School Nutrition Association of Oklahoma, which is throughout the United States. I just happen to represent Oklahoma. So thank you very much.
Kelly does an outstanding job of leading that program. And we never have to worry too much about that department, because we know it's in good hands. And it is always great to see our employees leading not only here, but out in the state as a whole. And there's another example of it right there. So Kelly, thank you very much for what you do. And your department, as always, does an outstanding job. So thank you very much. Appreciate Kyle helping us present those certificates. And I did want to mention a couple of other things. Kelly just mentioned, and Amber did too, that last week was National School Lunch Week. This month also is National Principals Month. And so Randy and Doug and I are kind of making the rounds to the campuses, either at their assemblies, morning assemblies, or faculty meetings, or group meetings like that, where we can present the principals with their certificate for National Principals Month and thank them in front of their group for that. So we're doing that this month. And we appreciate all that the principals do. Also, toward the end of this month, October 24th through the 28th, Governor Mary Fallon has proclaimed that week as Education Support Week. So we're encouraging our campuses to make sure that they do something nice for their support personnel. And we want to publicly say thank you to that group as well, because they work really hard and do a lot of good things for all of our employees and our students as well, and don't get near enough recognition for it. My last comment on the recognition side is, I'm sure when we get to Colonel Laschinsky's comments, he'll say a word about the Vance CPS partnership, Community Partnership meetings that we have hosted here. But I did receive in the mail today, a very nice thank you letter from Commander Judy, and thanking us for the use of the facility. And I thought that was very nice for them to, for him to take time to send me that note of thanks. And we're happy to provide the space for that. And we'll hear more from JJ a little bit on, later on, on that. I believe that's all I have on recognitions. Kyle? Okay. We do not have any audience to visitors, which then brings us back to you, Dr. Floyd, for the superintendent's report. All right, very good. Board members, you have a number of items there in front of you. And we're gonna go through these in order that they're laid out there. The first one is the timeline for our strategic plan. And this is our second full year of implementation. So you can see there, in the middle of the timeline, 2016, 17, where the Xs are checked, those boxes are checked. And that's what we're focusing on this year. So that's what you'll hear about in these committee chair reports. And I have encouraged these reporters to hold it to at least 35 minutes per report. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, five minutes or less. That's what it was, yeah. So I know they've been working diligently on these committees, and we appreciate all of their work. So the green folder that you have in front of you, board members, is actually the, you've got one committee summary per goal. And so we'll go through these one at a time. And the first one is the Community Parent Relationships, and that is Amber Fitzgerald's gonna provide us with that report.
I do represent Committee Number Three, and our goal is Community and Parent Relationships. Our large umbrella goal that was established at the beginning of the strategic planning process is that we will build and maintain partnerships that maximize the strengths, resources, and talents of our diverse community to expand opportunities for students. And we really divided that over three specific areas over three years. The first year was communication. The second year, this school year, was parent and community involvement. And the final year will be specifically community and business partnerships. So just a little bit of an overview about what we were able to accomplish last school year when we focused on communication, is that we did provide communication training for the staff at all schools and in all departments. We adopted a new website that was easier for our teachers to use and to update on a regular basis, and I think also easier for the public to use. We developed and implemented marketing plans for each school, so that they could not only make plans on how to communicate better with their parents, but also how to market what makes their school a special place to learn. We also worked on making sure that the communication that we have, that we're able to provide it in multiple languages, so that we meet the needs of all of our family members. And then we also created a campaign called Don't Wait, Update, to improve data integrity we have for students and staff. We had a very successful process at the end of last school year, especially at the elementary level, making sure that we had information that was updated. What we have learned this fall is that that will be an annual goal and strategy every year, because it's important that you stay on top of that and continue to promote it. So this year, our committee has expanded to include more members. And we are focusing again on community engagement and parent engagement. So a number of our goals are already underway, but they will all take the course of the school year for us to fully develop them the way that we want to. We are going to create a database of family involvement nights and resources, so that student, the schools can share ideas and make sure that if something's working in a building, and they have all the tools put together to make sure parents can come in and be a part of that night, that a school across the way would have access to those resources, so they could see how to do that as well. We've worked to develop parent-teacher conference publicity materials, and will expand in the spring even more than we did this year, resources for the schools and the teachers to use. Every school is identifying at least one community partnership, especially a partnership where it shows how we give back to our community, to make sure that we promote and highlight this school year. And then also, we're working to create and implement a parent information campaign for the parent portal. We actually have some materials that will begin going out next week. We do have about 700 people on average a day who access the parent portal, which is great. I'm glad it's being utilized. But we certainly want to see that number increase and to see more families impacted as well. So we have started at least one component of all four categories, and will continue to work this school year.
Questions for Amber before we go to the next one?
Thank you.
Well, Amber, I want to say thank you to you and all your committee members that have helped you with that. And I think we're making progress, so we appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, the next top, the goal category is facilities. And Michael Shuck is gonna provide us with the construction progress report. And even though you might not have seen dirt being turned yet, there is a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to get ready to turn dirt. So Michael's gonna tell us a little bit about what's taken place thus far, and then what's ahead.
Yeah, we've got about 50 projects that we're working on right now. We've touched 18 out of 18 school buildings that we plan on touching with the bond issues. I've done over a million dollars' worth of work currently. So like Dr. Floyd's saying, we're moving pretty good on it, even though there's not much dirt or anything being shown. Some of the key projects out of that 50 that we're working on, you've got a summary there that I can kind of go through some of those. Adams Middle School, or Adams Elementary, sorry. It's on a city block. There's utility easement that cuts off the existing building from the rest of the area that we could build on. So we've been working on trying to get to where we can build over that. All the utilities and City of Enid are all working with us pretty well to help us out with that. That way, it'll allow us to connect Adams, the new addition to the existing. It'd be a lot safer for our students. Eisenhower Elementary, that's kind of pushed up our priority list because of the real ID issues of base access. Right now, we know we can get on there until January 10th. That might be changing. We might have some other comments about that. Corbin and Murs has completed the design work on that. Henson Instructions put those drawings out for bid. We expect bids back November 2nd. New playground will be complete out there about mid-December. And then hopefully, have that project complete by the first of the year, so that we can be able to get all of our contractors on the base without any kind of a problem there. Garfield's gonna be a 10-classroom addition. Stacy Group's working on that. They've got the preliminary concepts, some of the preliminary concepts working on. We've asked them to go back and look at some other ones. There's about a five-month design time that we're planning on in that project. That'll be ready in March. Taft Elementary, we've got Corbin and Murs Architects on that. They're about 90% complete. That's a four-classroom addition. If you know Taft, it's a U-shaped building. We're putting those four classrooms in the, in that interior courtyard. So basically, we've got three walls already built on that. And we're buttoning up it next to a hallway that has classrooms on one side, and we're putting new classrooms on the other, so we didn't have to build that hallway. We kind of get that for free. So it's a nice economic kind of plan for that building. Also putting a security vestibule on the front. It's a beautiful art deco building, if you, as you know. And the little security vestibule they placed on, it's real simple and clean, so it doesn't mess up any of the beauty of that existing building. We're hoping to get that design done here in November. And it'll be a pretty quick construction, because it's a pretty small project. So it'll be one of the first ones that probably come online there for the bond-issue projects that's a building. Waller Middle School, Corbin and Murs is working on that as well. It's 50% complete. We're working on some classroom additions there. There are both additions and remodels to gain some classrooms. We're expanding on music and dining areas. The cafeteria, we're looking at a cafetorium where it can be used for orchestra. It'll also have some storage in there. And we're having a consultant come in to look at the student load for the cafeteria. As we increase the amount of students in that, we want to make sure that we can get the flow through the cafeteria real efficiently. They do it real efficiently out there right now, which is kind of amazing. They put so many kids through there. So hopefully, we can help with that and be ready for an increase in student population. Another interesting thing there is the eagle, the Waller Eagle Glades, which is an outdoor classroom on the north side of that, the playing fields out there. We're in the way of the city drainage. There's a drainage problem through there. We've got a pipe that's collapsed underneath the outdoor classroom. And they've started working with us to look at ways that we can fix that. We're gonna have to move the Eagle Glades, but it'll be a positive thing. We're gonna try to move it up closer to the building and kind of do it where it's more of fitting the class lesson plans that they use nowadays, something like a rock garden, arboretum. They teach a lot about energy in middle schools, so they have, they've been asking for a windmill or a water wheel or something like that, that they could show energy in this outdoor classroom. So a lot of the local groups have shown interest in helping us, Enid Treeboard, the Keeping It Beautiful, which is all very similar to what the original installation of that was.
And the Leadership Greater Enid class did some help out there last year.
So a lot of people are looking at that. And I think it'll be a plus that we'll be able to maintain it easier and have it more designed to the students, what they need. And it'll be a plus there in that location, with trees and stuff in the location. Daycare's around there. The churches around there could all benefit from it, as well as our students. The Cooperative Preschool at Northwestern, we've been working with Northwestern, talking about how their program will integrate with our program out there. I think we've come to a consensus. We're working on a memorandum of understanding. After we get that done, we'll be able to start the design on that. We've got playgrounds, which that'll start being some of the first stuff you see at Eisenhower. We'll have a playground going in there first. Glenwood, Hoover, McKinley, Monroe, Prairie View, all have playgrounds. So those will be some of the excitement things, exciting things that you should see by the first of the year, January, February, March. We're hoping to get those installed. So those will be some of the fun things that'll start popping up around the community that will be bond-issue related. And we're also having some security cameras go in. So that was kind of the highlights.
Questions for Michael?
Hi, Duke. Where are we at on the fine arts facility in the gym?
Yeah, sorry, didn't have that in here. It's really in the preliminary stages. What we're doing on it is, there's a, we're trying to create an architectural program. Basically, that's a list of spaces. So we're starting meetings now, where we're going through each one of the users groups, going through the band directors, the coaches, all the different user groups that we'd have involved in that. And really just talking to them, seeing what their needs are. And we'll talk to the administration, make sure we have, you know, what, all the administration, what direction we want to go. That creates a list of space. And then the architects will create a, oh, concepts off that for us to look at. So we're in that early phase there of what we call a program verification.
And the architects are coming on the 24th, I believe, to hear some of that info?
Yeah, the 24th will be a big meeting. We'll have an all-day meeting with all the different user groups. We'll be going through and looking at different facilities and different things like that with the architects on that day.
When you talked about adding these security vestibules?
Yeah.
Tell me, just kind of describe one of those for me, and tell me the process, please.
Yeah, the security vestibule is kind of the concept that we've got for the district is basically, you'll walk into a vestibule, which on a, as students come to the building, there'll be a double set of doors into the vestibule, and then another double set of doors that allow them to go in. That'd be when you're receiving children. Once that's happened, then we shut the door on the inside down. And the only way to access the building at that point is to come into the vestibule, but then you have to turn into the office. And that door, the main door and the office door would be unlocked. But once you got in there, the door back into the hallway to go into the school would be locked. So you'd have to have access given by the secretary there at the door. So you come into the vestibule, you go into the lobby, the reception lobby there. We'll eventually have visitor management system, which a lot of our schools have now. We're gonna try to get one system that'd go through the whole district. But you'd be able to, you know, get your visitor pass. Those would be able to do various things, screening the individuals that'd be checking in. There's a lot of possibilities there, calling up the student, various things too.
Much like the entrances at Garfield and Prairie View.
Yeah.
It might not be that big. It might not be that big, but that concept.
So, they'll be ac, they'll actually be allowed access to the office, just not into the school?
That they don't get access to the rest of the building until they check through the office.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Michael?
I just wanted to say, you're letting kids vote on the playground. Will the winner, will they actually get their playground? Is that really gonna?
Uh, uh.
Put you on the spot. That just sounded really fun, giving them options.
The best one will win, yes.
Okay, okay.
Oh, yeah, we will have them. We realize that, well, we're part of the school system. We want to help with the education of our kids, so that's what we realized, that we had the playgrounds. And here in election year, you know, we can join right in with the, their social studies lessons and let them vote.
Yeah.
So, that's what we're doing. At several of them, we've given them the option. The teachers are actually voting now. Monroe votes tomorrow morning, if you want to go.
So, you're just giving them a couple of different concepts, and then the kids get to decide?
Yeah, because we have to, we have to, most of them are below 50%, $50,000, which requires us to get multiple quotes from vendors. So, we've had four vendors that were interested in looking at them. They've all created some very interesting ones. It's interesting, the level that they went to with it, the development of upper body strength and manipulatives that are out there. It's not just climb up and slide down anymore. It's, they've really put a lot of thought into them.
Really good.
So, we've got some great ones, and we'll vote for them.
Really good exercise for the kids to go through on the, especially during election season. I think that's a really good learning experience for them.
I just thought that was really cool. I was curious if they would actually, if you were actually installing the one that won, so I just think that's really cool.
Yeah, we'll definitely put a lot of weight on that.
But just to alleviate any fears, we did not give the elementary students a blank check. No, we did not.
That's right.
We did have some parameters in there, but.
Are they learning to campaign in sling mud?
Ooh.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we hope not.
We left that part out. We left that part out. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate your time and appreciate the job you've done for us. All right, next is enrichment opportunities, and Randy is the second pinch hitter here because Rob Mills is chairing this committee, and he had back surgery recently, still recovering from that. So, Doug was going to give the report, but Doug was sick all night last night, and that's the reason he's not here today. He's recovering, so Randy is pinch hitting.
Yes, and I'll probably strike out, so.
Nah.
I'm basically just going to go through this information. I think you all know a lot of what we offer. Our goals are to expand the relevant list of available programs to increase participation in those activities and then build upon the current community support through activities as well. Six Plus has helped with that. I think behind the sheet that you have, there's a list of activities throughout our high schools, and if you look at that list, I mean, it's kind of, makes you go, wow, we offer a lot of things already, so some pretty cool stuff going on out there. One of the special things that we've highlighted on this list is the Enid High School Young Entrepreneur Program. Feel like that's been successful. We're looking at developing some fifth-grade clinics with some of our high school off-season programs. I know we actually have one going on right now at Monroe, I think, that had 52 kids attend. It was soccer, and so some high school kids come down and they conduct those clinics, and they work with those kids. And I know that it was really good last week, and I think we're doing it again this week for another couple of weeks. We don't have that real coordinated throughout the whole district yet, but that's one of the goals, is to be able to offer at least one of those at each of the elementary schools, but we're still working with the high school coaches on getting that scheduled. Sixth grade is looking at a field day where they can do intermurals. Band has increases across the district, which is exciting. Emerson is partnering, and this goes just back to some of the partnerships that we have and that we're fostering. Emerson is partnering with Vance to help with the Six Plus Tech Time, and as you can see, they received a $12,000 STEM grant, which is awesome. Longfellow is partnering with the Marshall East Community, Enid Youth Pastors, North Garland Church of Christ, School Supply Drive, Save-A-Lot Foods, and Project Lead the Way. Waller is partnering with the community and FCA, Enid Public Library, and the Craft Club. And then, the Enid High Young Entrepreneur Program is with the Koch, that's the foundation, correct? Yes, the Koch Foundation. And then, Tim Gregg with the Observatory. So, there's some really exciting things going on out there, and this is not an exhaustive list. We have other things going on as well.
Obviously, the intent of this one is to look at additional opportunities that we can provide for students to get involved in activities that they have an interest in, and I think we are beginning to see the benefits of that. One of the things on the, obviously, the Six Plus has allowed students to get involved in a number of things that they're involved in, and the reason recently that we sent out a survey to parents and students was to try to ascertain whether or not the, not having the buses run at 3:30 was causing them not to participate in those additional activities. So, we're not ready with the recommendation on that yet, but we're still looking at those results, and then we'll have a recommendation for that on the November board meeting. And if we, if the results show that we can increase our numbers of participants, if they had bus transportation at the end of that, well, then we might look at making a switch back to running the buses at 3:30 instead of 2:30. Now, that would not entail any changes of schedules or anything for middle school students, and Mr. Gail Sorup said that, yes, he could make that adjustment for the second semester if it is deemed beneficial. He just needs about a 30-day notice, prior notice, such that he can work out all the details. So, we hope to have that item on the list for more discussion with you guys and maybe a recommendation at the November board meeting. Questions for Randy or me on this one?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. He'll be back up here in just a minute. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Assessment and Accountability. Lynn Peters is going to provide us with that report.
Last year, our main plan was to look at our district assessments and identify what was essential, and so from that work, we have identified a testing schedule and calendar, and so on the backside of our report is a copy of this year's schedule. And this year's work is twofold. The first one is organizing and conducting teacher training, and so we started that this summer and offered a lot of training through the Instructional Services Department and the IT Department, and involved the Mastery Connect and ELL training and some data and even some PLC training. And so, that result is already in place. The second one is working towards student-led conferences, and so we have offered a survey out to principals and are starting to gather some information regarding what is currently being done in terms of student-led conferences for our district. We're going to continue to research, work with the committee, and then look to pilot student-led conferences in the near future.
Jordan Sweet, yeah. Any questions for Lynn?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Character Development, and Jane Johnson and Steve Hayes, Chair of this committee. Jane's going to provide us with a summary.
Coach Hayes thought he had to be at football for something tonight, so.
No, I don't know what the deal is there.
And we met as a committee in the spring and recommended that Great Expectations be the district adopted character development program for our district, elementary through secondary. So, we have had the administrators have all met with the GE mentors at the elementary and secondary level to receive more information about Great Expectations. We have three additional schools that have received scholarships so that they can send any and all of their teachers to training throughout the summer and this fall, and those were Hoover, Adams, and Taft. And then Hayes and Garfield continue to be Great Expectations Scholarship Schools. So, we've begun the professional development aspect of the character development for administrators and teachers. And then, we are working on establishing mentoring programs, and different sites are at different levels of establishing those. United Way has established some mentoring programs in some of the schools that are mentioned there with the Coach-A-Kid. We also are beginning the African-American mentoring process in seeking mentors and students for them to mentor at the schools. Some of the different elementary schools have some special things going on. McKinley has Keegan Toohey that comes and helps to mentor their fifth-grade classes. Monroe is working with one of the 33rd Flying Squadron at Vance, and Coolidge has developed some after-school clubs, working on some quote-unquote "soft skills" like art and girl power and men in training and things like that. So, all different kinds of things going on across the district and.
Can you just touch on some of the items that are most beneficial as far as what you can see from the Coach-A-Kid program?
From the Coach-A-Kid program with United Way, they come in and they're paired with one single student in the building, and it's another adult to pay attention to some of the kiddos at need that perhaps lack a role model at home, male or female. It's just another adult for the kids to be able to share their life with, read to, if that's what they. Carla Burdick has been instrumental in getting that going in the different buildings, and we have, like at Garfield, we have a tub filled with just games and activities and things that the mentors can use with the students. They go hang out in the library or the hallway and just kind of visit and spend some time together. And I can see from some of my students that it's a great thing. They look forward to that mentor coming. They've come sometimes and eaten lunch with them and those kinds of things. So, just another grown-up to pay attention to some of our kiddos is very valuable.
Yeah, very beneficial, and United Way has helped us get that program going. And then, you know, we've got a number of other adults that come into our campuses that serve in mentor roles and fold very nicely into this character development goal area. Stan Brownlee and his group come to mind. I mean, it's amazing, the, you can hear a pin drop when he comes and talks to those kids, and he's talking to them about how to be the best, be their very best, and have good character development, and even without sharing that title or that topic with them, and it's real-world stuff that is going to benefit them in the long run. So, this is, I'm glad we have this as one of our goals because it's lifelong learning for these kids, for sure.
One of the things that I failed to put on there, too, was that we had a meeting at Garfield with the Enid Ministerial Alliance, and we talked with some of the churches about what they could do to help us in the schools, and we mentioned mentoring to them, and so I anticipate that they'll contact some principals and perhaps have some other mentors available, and we recommended the Coach-A-Kid program to that group of gentlemen and ladies also.
Questions for Jane?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Next up is Curriculum and Instruction, and Sherri Hendry and Jeff is just going to assist. Jeff Herbal.
When we talk about curriculum instruction, some of the most recent things that we completed last year were progression guides. We are under new Oklahoma academic standards in ELA, English Language Arts, and in math, which, as you know, involves all of our students at every level. So, we have, we completed with teacher help and input on those. We completed progression guides for grades pre-K through 5 at elementary, 6 through 8 at middle school, and then also for subject matters at high school. So, all of those are in place, and we're working with those now at each of our sites. So, that was something that is quite a task to complete. It's one task to have new standards, it's another task to work with those new standards, and this has been quite a transition year for our teachers to work with those. Jeff, do you want to talk about some things with technology that we've done last year?
One of the large parts of our curriculum instruction was making sure that we had a one-to-one deployment, and we've been in our planning stages of that for the last year. We got the first milestone completed a couple of weeks ago when we finished our student handbook, and then we held parent meetings after our parent-teacher conference night, and those were well-attended, had some very good questions on it. And as we start to move forward, I think we've done a lot of work, we've spent a lot of time, so I'm hoping things move fairly smoothly because we've, we've, we've looked under every rock and tried to make sure we've covered everything going forward with it.
And just as a reminder, on that one-to-one rollout, board members, I believe this is still, the plan is right after fall break is to start that rollout process with the, correct me if I'm wrong here, Jeff, High School on the 24th and 25th, Emerson on the 26th, Waller on the 27th, and Longfellow on the 28th. Is that right?
That's correct. So, we're going to, our goal is deploy all of those schools in one week. That's over 3,500 Chromebooks, so it's a little bit of an aggressive schedule, but we believe we can make it happen.
So, as you look at the moving forward section on your reference sheet that you have, one of the things that we've done is we've implemented a digital platform this year called Mastery Connect. This is something new for us in the district, and we're providing a lot of professional development on this. This follows along with standards-based instruction. So, as we're looking at these new standards and as teachers work with a standard with their students, then they do a check for understanding to see where students are as far as mastering that particular standard. And this digital platform allows us to help monitor that with a little bit more ease for teachers. It also provides us with some data that we can look at as we check for understanding. We can run reports that help us show item analysis and things like this, so we can find out where our students are needing help specifically. So, as we plan our interventions, when we do our RTI, our Response to Intervention, we know exactly what we're targeting. So, it's helping us to be more explicit and systematic as we target the needs of our students, as they might need remediation or as they might need enrichment as we go through. So, we're providing a lot of professional development through the year on Mastery Connect. As we move into second semester, we've, with our EPSet in January, we'll actually have some teachers that will be presenting on Mastery Connect. So, we're working on that, working on aligning the pre-advanced placement and advanced placement curriculum guidelines. There's already been a meeting with stakeholders on that. That's been divided into three different committees. There's an elementary group working on that, a middle school, and then a high school group that's working on those alignments. They're reworking the Gifted and Talented Handbook that we've had in the past. Developing high school college and career plan of study for students beginning in sixth grade. This is a little bit in the infancy stage right now. Mr. Stafford, I know, has been working with Autry Tech on this to develop some, so that we can start as early as sixth grade, looking with kids on planning about college and career for them. There are also some things coming down from the State Department, I believe, to help with that, so a little bit in the infancy on that, but working toward that. Create, you've taught, we talked a lot about citizenship, civic awareness, and preparing students for global citizenship with STEM. We've talked about entrepreneurship opportunities and partnerships that we have, so that continues to flow into the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Continued implementation of EPS Connect, which is what Jeff had talked about a little bit. Do you want to talk about any professional development with that?
Well, our, our large conference in January is EPS Connect. It is, I'm sorry, EPSet. We're in our fourth year of that conference. It is, it's going to be the largest technology conference in Northwest Oklahoma. We're actually larger than the OTA Conference. We had more sessions, lectures than they did. So, we're providing high-quality technology integration education to our staffs. And for this year, we are opening it up to other school districts and hoping to get a few hundred teachers from throughout Northwest Oklahoma to come in and show them what we're doing, actually, teach them so they can take it back to their schools. So, a large focus of it will be on our one-to-one implementation. Once we're done with the Chromebooks, we will move into iPad implementation in our early childhood. That will take place after EPSet in January, so it works really good. We'll get training in January. They'll get their iPads in mid-January, and then the teachers should, should have some sense of understanding of what we're looking at for education in the classroom. One of those, one of the big things that we focus on, too, is digital citizenship. As we start moving into using technology on a regular basis every day, we need to teach our students how to properly use that technology, make sure they understand that anything they do online may be with them for the rest of their lives. So, we have a core curriculum that we've been using for a few years, but it's now time to actually move it into every, every. time to actually move it into every, every curriculum, every subject matter. So, every student's getting it on a regular basis, how important it is to stay mindful of that digital citizenship.
So, just one final thought. As we, as we roll out new things in our district about curriculum and instruction, and we talk about new standards and things like this with our teachers, through instructional services, through IT, we're continually providing them professional development, whether that be in forms of modules that we have, or right now, we currently have a professional development on formative assessments that teachers are using as they work with standards. So, we're continually supporting our staff, hopefully the best way that we can, with any new initiatives that we put forward, or just to continue to support them along on their way. Any questions for us?
I do have a question on the Chromebooks. I was talking to someone about that, and they said that there are probably only, like, on a textbook, we only have a limited amount because of the cost that we can offer to the students.
Limited amount of what?
Of textbooks that can be downloaded onto the Chromebooks for them to take home and use or...
Yeah, currently, we do, we do not have a district standardized textbook that can be downloaded to a Chromebook. We've got resources available by publishers that we've adopted. So, we have, Pearson has products that we can download, and we are limited based on the amount of electronic books that we bought three or four years ago. We're limited on the amount of electronic resources for those. We are actually working on an initiative called Go Open, which is to look at open educational resources, to start building our own collection of free resources that are available to take that to the next level. What I would say is our goal is not with the one-to-one to automatically replace textbooks as we move forward. We know we're not gonna yank every textbook out and put it all online on day one. We can't do that because we are limited on the amount of textbooks, electronic resources that we have. So, we're working on a phased approach. This year, we're looking at math as our area because it's up for adoption, and seeing if we can make that happen, if it's possible, to make a transition for this school year into next year for electronic textbooks for math. But that's a goal, and it's not gonna happen overnight. And we're thinking, if it happens, it will be next school year before we start that.
Since you're on that topic, any idea what the difference in cost is from a physical textbook to being able to download it onto a...
It's usually $5 per license more than buying a book.
Really?
Yes.
They don't have to print it, but they're charging us more?
Yes, they are. They're, they're making that money for the lost vendors, the printers, the copiers, the, all the people that are involved in printing a book, they're still making that money. And now, they have to produce it and put it online or put it in a format that can be transported electronically. So, it's actually costing more. So, that's why you're gonna hear us talk about open educational resources, which are free resources that don't cost anything as we move forward over the next few years. And instead of purchasing online materials, we're gonna be looking for free resources that meet our goals.
Can I throw a thought out there for you? Ernie, at the school board, the state convention, I went to a breakout session on the open resources. And it was one of the most enlightening topics that I had heard because textbooks, as we know it if we buy it today, like, for instance, I think in the past year, we've had two periodic elements added to the periodic table. Well, most textbooks are out of date because, and you're not gonna go, it's financially hard to go out and replace all those textbooks based on just that one chart. So, I am all in favor of looking into the online resources because you can update them easily.
You may check out, OSSBA has been working over the last year, putting together curriculum. They've got high school curriculum done. We've had some staff members attend working on ELA. So, they're working on getting that ready for distribution after Christmas. Those resources are free online. They built their system in iTunes, which will not work in our Chromebooks. However, they've got a conduit that we can use their resources on our Chromebooks. It looks a little different, but it's still the same materials. So, they've created textbook, basically, online textbooks. We are gonna look at taking their resources and looking at what we want and what fits our needs here needed. And then, we'll look at other places. Broken Arrow's been one that's created a lot over the last year and a half. So, we'll look at theirs, and then we'll look at other places that have actually pulled those resources together and build something that fits us, that meets our pacing guide. Instead of, in the past, we would have a textbook that we may actually start on chapter five would be our first one, then you go back to chapter one, then to chapter 10, then to chapter two, because the textbook isn't written to match our pacing guide. So, if we do it ourselves, we can match it, put it in line with our pacing guides.
If, if we buy a science book with paper, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Like Tori said, and I understand that we would have to redo that book, if we buy it electronic version, does the extra $5 incorporate any updates, or do we have to buy the whole thing again if they add two elements to the...
It's gonna depend on the vendor. Each vendor, each vendor's gonna have their own rules on, on what they charge. I know it's been about six years ago, Irving ISD implemented a one-to-one. And they went to their textbook companies and said, hey, we just wanna buy electronic They, they charged them the extra price, but they, they made them take the actual hard textbooks. So, they put a warehouse full of textbooks in Irving ISD and let them sit because they didn't wanna use them, just so they could use the online book. So, the textbook industry is nervous, is the best way to put it, when it comes to schools going online with resources. There are resources out there. Pearson has a full online resource that we could pay for like $20 a year per kid. However, I've heard some horror stories from other school districts in the state that have implemented that. And there's other things out there from IBM and others that have full sets of online curriculums. And those, yeah, they update regularly because you pay a yearly subscription. Where you get into the problem is you pay once, and that's all the updating you get. So, how they get you is into a subscription. They lower the price, but once they get you, it's hard to change to something else because you've got the good, you've done all your training, you've got the people using it, you've got students using it. So, it becomes a little easier, but it's also a cost issue on, do you have those recurring funds every year to get the maintained updates that they wanna put out?
I'm certain that everything we need to know and teach these kids is out there on Wikipedia. If you all could just develop a curriculum.
Yeah, and accurate. Yes, yes. Any other questions for these two? Sherri, Jeff, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And our last goal area we're gonna hear from tonight is Personnel and Professional Development. Randy and, Randy Rader and Matt Holson have been chairing that committee. And both of those guys are here today. Randy's gonna report, but if we have any additional questions that Randy can't answer, well, Matt's here as well.
Personnel and Professional Development. You can see our specific results right there, retaining, grow quality teachers, and support staff, create an ongoing professional development calendar for all recruit, recruit quality teachers and support personnel, and grow culturally diverse instructional and support personnel reflecting the needs of our community. This is kind of a, I'm not gonna say this is necessarily an easy committee to work on, but it is kind of an easy committee to work on because of the importance, you've heard almost everybody talk about professional development. And luckily, Enid puts a high priority on professional development. So, just kinda keeping that ball rolling has been good. We've been able to put our online calendar, or our PD online, so teachers could see that. It's not a surprise when it's gonna happen. We know when it's gonna happen. And we had a lot of successful training throughout the summer. I'm not gonna read this paper to you verbatim, but one of the things I think we've done really well is we've been able to create some surveys through Google Forms. And the great thing about that is the surveys, they, it collects that data onto spreadsheets, and we can really track and find out if our PD was meaningful. Another thing that we've been able to do is the, teachers have to track their own professional development. So, we can, when they sign up for something at one of our big events, say EPSIT or something like that, then we can, when they sign up using that form, it just collects that data, and we can send that out to the buildings. And so, they know which teachers went to what PD. And so, it makes it a lot easier to track that. And we've been able to do that this last year, and so, we're pretty proud of that. Another thing that we're really proud of, that the EEA has worked really hard on, is the STEPS mentoring program. And you can see that, and the State Department is actually modeling much of their mentoring off of that. And Matt, and, and we've worked really hard on that. So, kudos to EEA with that. The, the areas that we really feel like we're gonna focus on this year, we had a meeting last week. We know we need to continue to work on our professional development for our support staff. I think last year, probably the certified staff kinda took priority maybe a little bit, but we know we need to get support staff. We have a lot of good professional development for our support staff out there. I know Ron does a great job with maintenance, and, and you know, they do the safety things that they need to. But I still think there's some things out there that we can do with our secretaries. And the hard part about the support staff is it's such a diverse group that sometimes it's hard to tailor that. And then, sometimes when we have professional development days, they may or may not be at work. Or if they are maintenance, they're not taking the day off to, you know, sometimes that's when the kids aren't in the building, so that's when they need to be in the building doing the work. So, we're still working on how to coordinate that and make that look. The surveys and needs assessments, we're continuing to fine-tune that, although we have a pretty good process. You know, not one survey fits everything, and so, we're continuing to kinda try to fine-tune that. And then, one of the things that we did this year that I think was really effective is we streamlined some of our PD that's mandatory every year, like bloodborne pathogens and some different things like that. And really, I feel like the way we did it this year, we've kinda had it online before, but the way we did it this year, really streamlined it and make it, made it a lot more user-friendly and didn't take up as much time. So, FERPA and bloodborne pathogens and things like that that we're required to do yearly, we can do those online, take just a few minutes, and then we can spend our PD days actually doing the PD that we need to do with teachers as opposed to sitting in front of a computer or talking about FERPA or something like that. So, we're continuing to work on those. And like I said, it's a definite high priority for the district, and we're excited about the direction we've been able to go so far. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Randy? Well, thank you very much. Matt, thank you for working on that committee as well. And I wanna say thank you to all of the committee chairs and all the people that have worked on all those committees. We, we talk all the time about what a great exercise it was to put that strategic plan together because it involves so many people. And now, we are into the meat and the work of getting each of those goals accomplished. And it takes a lot of people, as you saw tonight, working on a whole bunch of different areas at one time. So, we've got seven broad goals that we are working on simultaneously throughout the district. And it takes a lot of time, effort, and energy from a lot of people to try to make progress on all of those goal areas. So, again, thank you very much to all the folks that are working on all those broad areas. And I think it's good for the board members to hear periodically from these folks on what kind of progress we are making. And you can kinda see that we're, sometimes we're taking baby steps and other times we're taking giant steps, but all toward the benefit of students, and that's what it's all about. So, thank you all very much. We appreciate those reports, and I think we'll, if you're ready, we'll move on. Okay, next item, board members. We have an 11-minute video that we wanna show you tonight. It's public school versus charter school funding video. And this video was put together by Shannon Meeks. He is, Shannon is currently the CFO at Putnam City. And he put together this video in a very clever way that presents the, the mechanics of the state aid formula to demonstrate how charter schools are kinda sucking money away from the funding formula for public schools. Now, just to be clear here before the video starts, we're talking about charter schools here, not ESAs or vouchers. That's a whole totally separate ballgame. But this is public school funding versus charter school funding. So, Mark's gonna start the video for us.
How much state aid do schools receive per student? Do charter schools receive the same amount? How is state aid funding impacting both charter and public schools? Before you answer these questions, let me tell you a story. Three coworkers, Quincy, John, and Rex, realized they each intended to dine at the same restaurant the same night. They had a great idea: share a table, talk shop, and call it a business dinner. All three ordered the same $80 steak dinner. $240 later, the evening was complete. The next day, each of the three received $80 reimbursement checks from their company. However, one issue remained. Quincy had chosen the restaurant because he possessed a 50% off coupon. So, while he was reimbursed $80 for the meal, he only spent $40. As a result, he contributed the $40 difference to what was called the Even Steven Pot. John had a $20 off coupon. As he received a full $80 check for what was a $60 meal, John added the $20 gain to the Even Steven Pot. The night of the dinner was actually Rex's birthday, and everyone knows birthday boys eat free. Although he had come out $80 ahead, Rex chose to hang on to his birthday rights by contributing zero to the Even Steven Pot. At that point, the $60 Even Steven Pot was split evenly, $20 to each person. Let's move our story to a chart, starting with all distributions. Quincy, John, and Rex each received an $80 check from the company. They also received $20 from the Even Steven Pot, bringing total distributions to $100 each. Quincy contributed $40 to the Even Steven Pot, resulting in a net night of $60. John added $20 to the pot, leaving him with $80. And Rex, who added nothing, ended up with $100 from the dinner. This story is a true representation of how state aid funding to schools works. The commonly referred to state funding factor, seen as the total funding factor in our chart, is represented by the $100 distribution in our story. This total funding factor is not a true measure of state aid. Instead, it is comprised of both the true funding factor, the $80 check, and the $20 redistribution of the Even Steven Pot, called the equalization funding factor. This $20 does not represent state aid, only the shift of money between friends. However, the state aid allocation form presents only the total funding factor. This unintentional lack of transparency creates problems. The total funding factor is often misused in attempts to measure changes in the financial support of schools. Many argue that as long as we stick to the same measurement point of total funding factor, we're comparing apples to apples. Let's test that theory. As fiscal year 12 lends itself well to this test, we will compare it to fiscal year 16. The total funding factor, or the $100 from our story, was $3,040.20 in fiscal year 12 and $3,034.60 in fiscal year 16. This leads many to pronounce a $5.60 per student decrease in funding. However, if we look at the true funding factor, the $80 check from our story, we see that schools received $1,699.43 per student in fiscal year 12 while receiving $1,601.40 per child in fiscal year 16, a decrease of over $98 per student. As you can see, comparing total funding factors from year to year is actually an apples-to-oranges Now that we have seen the dangers of relying on the total funding factor, let's complete our chart. The actual money retained represents net state aid, while the Even Steven Pot is comprised of what we call chargeables in state aid. But what are chargeables in real life? The Oklahoma State Aid Funding Formula uses an equalization model where locally affluent school districts give some of their state aid to less locally affluent schools. Local influence is measured by revenues known as chargeables. Local revenues, or chargeables, used to measure local influence are property taxes, both local and county, school land earnings, oil, gas, and mineral taxes, motor vehicle collections, and the Rural Electric Association cooperating tax. To better understand the equalization model, let's return to our story. Local influence was represented by the different coupons used. Quincy's 50% off coupon led to a $40 chargeable. John's $20 off coupon resulted in a $20 chargeable. And Rex's birthday boy stance led to his having no chargeables. When each friend withdrew $20, he saw the redistribution of local revenues through the equalization funding... the equalization funding factor. The story started with $240 from the company, each coworker receiving $80. After equalization, the same $240 remained, but distributed differently. The same is true in state aid. Equalization does not add to the total amount of state aid, it just shifts the aid between school districts. The equalization model worked as intended for many years. However, the last decade has seen a growing imbalance inside the formula. To better understand, we return to the restaurant. First, we must answer a universal question: when three guys share a booth, how do they decide who doubles up? Here's a previously omitted fact: John and Quincy are the eldest sons of Mr. and Mrs. Smith, while Rex is the Jones family only child. Taking this new information to our equalization graph helps highlight the imbalance. While the Smith family contributed $60 to the even Steven pot, they only received $40 when the pot was redistributed. Conversely, the Jones family contributed nothing to the even Steven pot, but received $20 upon the redistribution. While the total impact on net state aid remains at zero, there's a clear imbalance between the two families. When examining state aid, the Smith family represents public schools, both contributing and receiving distributions through equalization. Charter schools are represented by the Jones, contributing nothing to chargeables but taking a full share of their redistribution. In fiscal year 16, public schools contributed $1.609 billion of chargeables, while charter schools added nothing. Through the equalization funding factor, public schools received $1.565 billion for a net loss of $44 million. This $44 million was given to charter schools. Again, a net state aid impact of $0, but a clear $44 million imbalance. Now that we see how publics and charter schools are treated differently in the state aid formula, we must reexamine our funding comparisons. This time, we start with fiscal year '09, when charter schools received $3,275.60 per student, while public schools received $2,005.68 per student. This difference of $1,269.92 was the impact of equalization. In fiscal year 16, charter schools received $3,034.60 per child, while public schools barely received half of that, at $1,560.87. The impact of equalization having grown to $1,473.73. When changes in funding are measured, we see that while charter schools are receiving $241 less per student, public schools are actually receiving $444.81 less. To add perspective, if my district, Putnam City Schools, had received in fiscal year 16 the level of funding we received in fiscal year '09, we would have had $14.3 million more in state aid. An extra $14.3 million means we could have added almost two teachers per grade per school. Another option would have been to give every teacher close to a $7,900 raise. Maybe a combination of the two would have been preferred, adding a teacher per grade per school and giving each teacher a $3,300 raise. So, what did the story tell us? First, the total funding factor, the only funding factor seen on a state aid form, is a contrived number that obscures what is really happening in funding of schools. All public dialogue and state laws should reference the true funding factor. Next, the inclusion of charter schools has thrown the state aid formula out of balance. Lastly, the combined impact of the first two points has led to a hidden $445 per child decrease in public school funding since fiscal year '09. This presentation is not a statement on charter schools. It is not intended to propose funding changes or support funding solutions. Its only purpose is to illuminate the state aid process, so that before solutions to state aid funding debates are proposed, we first thoroughly understand the question.
So, I think Shannon's done a really good job of putting that thing together, if nothing else to show some disparities and gaps and holes in the funding system that most people are not aware of until somebody like that sheds light on it. And it's, it's an issue, and it's a growing issue that needs to be addressed legislatively. And I'm toying with the idea of showing that video to our legislators at one of our legislative breakfasts. I don't know if we're going to do that or not, but I think it would be enlightening for them to see, because they, they're not in this frying pan every day like Carl is, and they don't know the funding system inside out like he does. So, there's no way that they probably know the details of that to the extent that that 11-minute video showed. So, I think it's, it may be beneficial for them to see that and at least see the disparity that has been incurred over time. And you know, we oftentimes talk about, well, you know, one side says, "School districts are underfunded," and the other side says, "Yeah, well, we keep pumping money into the system." Well, that may be true, yet what most people don't understand is the mechanism whereby that is divvied out, and that kind of sheds a little light on it. So, thought it'd be hopefully beneficial for you guys to see that as well. So, any questions for Carl? Not me, but Carl on that. Carl, you've been dealing with this issue for many years, and I'm guessing that it has grown year after year after year until now we're to the point where the disparity is relatively graphic.
Absolutely. That fact plus the fact that our student population has grown year after year kind of exacerbates the problem and means that, that even though our legislature has pumped additional dollars into the formula, we're still behind where we were in 2009 in per capita funding. Part of it's because a large chunk of it is going to the charter schools, and part of it is because our student population as a state has grown. Those are the two main factors that have placed us in the situation that we're in.
All right. Thank you, Carl. I've got a few more items here that I'll try to run through quickly. Board members, the, as it relates to finance, you might have seen an article, this was October the 7th, where the State Treasurer of Oklahoma has already come out publicly and talked, began talking about the budget hole being assured. We all already know that last legislative session, they, they plugged some holes with one-time money, and that was beneficial, but it's going to catch up with the legislature this legislative session, and so they're already beginning to talk about the budget hole that we're going to be faced with. So, I think it'll be interesting and probably more apparent now that there likely may be another revenue failure that we are faced with here in a few months. So, all of that, the video and that, what the treasurer said, all leads to why this school district is facing $1 million hole this fiscal year, and we've already talked about that in the past. Okay, try to run through the rest of this quickly. You've got a centennial celebration handout there. That is Adams Elementary's 100th anniversary. Certainly would invite you folks to join us Thursday, October 27th, over at Adams Elementary Playground, 5:00 to 6:30. We've got the OSSBA Region 3 Board Training Session coming up on November the 1st. Carol has contacted everybody, and looks like everybody's going to that training except for Amanda. She's got a conflict that night, so we will plan on leaving, I think we can get everybody in a suburban. We will plan on leaving from this building at 4:15 that day. I've got another meeting in the city that day, but I'll be back, so we can all go together at 4:15. Think that'll be, and if we leave at 4:15, we'll be over there in time for the pre-region meeting workshop that starts at 5:30.
If we can't get everybody to suburban, will you jump and go with me on the motorcycle?
Oh, thanks, Randy.
I wouldn't mind seeing a picture of that, so we'll see if we can arrange that, yeah. Okay. The observatory, we did hear back from Mr. Gregg, and he plans to talk with the, some other donors, and he's going to meet with administrators over at the high school November 1st and 2nd, but he would like to delay the dedication ceremony until after the 1st of the year, so we will honor those wishes. We've talked to you before about the fact that this year, one of our areas of emphasis is in both student attendance and employee attendance, and so we are tracking that this year, and we're kind of got a friendly competition among the employees, campus to campus, and we are rewarding them each month with the winning campus. Randy and Doug and I are pitching in some money to provide that campus with cookies for the winning campus that particular month. So, the month of September was won by Hoover Elementary, and then those teachers following that that had perfect attendance the next month get their name put into a drawing that we will draw for at the end of the year for $500 to be used in their classroom for teaching materials and supplies. So, congratulations to Hoover Elementary for the month of September. Also, another exciting venture, you heard a little bit in the report about, in one of those reports, about our youth entrepreneurship program. We are the first pilot program in the state of Oklahoma for that effort in partnership with Koch Industries. And recently, I sent Doug to a meeting in the city for the Oklahoma Summit Conference, and Dr. Cheryl Evans was there, and Sherry Snyder from NOC. And out of that meeting and conversation, they are interested in partnering with us because of our youth entrepreneurship program along with ERDA to benefit their entrepreneurship programs as well. So, I think it can be win-win as we move forward with that process. Want to mention to you some safe sidewalks projects that we have going on. We have entered into an agreement with a gentleman that has a patented program where he can come in, and if there's a trip hazard on a concrete walkway, he can kind of smooth that out with their patented program. So, we had him look at all of our sidewalks throughout the district of 3/8ths of an inch or higher on an unlevel walking surface, and he provided us with a cost estimate, and so we've given him the go-ahead to resolve those issues with their patented system, and it smooths it out. And you can tell, matter of fact, between the SSC building and the Technology Building, you can see where they've done a little bit of work in solving one issue there that we actually had two people trip on over the last few months. One really hurt themselves. But you, you can tell that it's grinded off, but eventually that will be, that discoloration will fade and it won't be so evident. But, lot cheaper than replacing all of that concrete, and I think it helps us on the safety aspect. So, I just want to let you know that that'll be going on across the district. He also pinpointed for us a number of points that are really city-owned. Some of them are curbing, some of them are sidewalks, so I forwarded that information to Gerald Gilbert at the city and asked him if they'd be interested in just having that guy kill two birds when he's out here working on our campuses. And he does want to do that, but he needs to wait until a little further into the fiscal year to make sure he's going to have the money available for that. It's only like $11,000 for the city, and that's, in their overall budget, is not significant. But, so I think they will do their part as well, just might not happen at the same time that ours does. Amber had to step out for a minute, but sent you some information recently on a possibility of a movie being shot here in Enid that's going to star Jake Gyllenhaal, and they've kind of used Amber as the point of contact for looking at, apparently they just needed a building to utilize in some of their background shots, I think. I'm not sure if they're actually going to go into the building or not, but they're looking at Harrison Building for utilizing in some of those shots, so we'll see what happens with that. But, that's kind of exciting for Enid. Our employees have participated in the community-wide United Way program, and I wanted to share some of those results with you tonight, but then also in November, we'll be recognizing the friendly competition winners of, in some categories. But our employees raised over $11,500 for, to benefit those in our area that are in greatest need, and that's just a wonderful thing for employees to step forward and help others in our community. So, appreciate everyone who participated in that. And we, our friendly competition goes kind of based on size, the large campuses versus the small campuses and then the departments. So, we give, started it last year, I believe, maybe this is our third year, I can't remember, providing those recognitions and awards. So, next month, we'll be presenting awards to Garfield for the large campus, Carver for the small, and then the Student Services Department next door, Special Education Department for the departmental winner. And so, so we want to thank them, but also everyone that participated in the United Way campaign. All that money stays here locally to help those in greatest need that really need it. The Human Services Alliance of Greater Enid, you might have read recently where the city council decided to do things a little bit differently this year, and they just turned over a chunk of money to that group and said, "You guys disperse it because we really don't want to hear all these presentations and have to be making these decisions." That's a synopsis of the end result. But, so what that has caused the Human Services Alliance of Greater Enid to do is to then call for proposals and to divvy out some of that money. So, we presented three proposals, and then United Way presented one. Our three proposals were, one, for a coach-a-kid reading camp, two, for Oklahoma middle-level teacher professional development, and then a third one for college and career center assistance at the high school. And then, United Way, I believe, is going to, either has or is going to develop and present a proposal to help us out at Northwestern for those four early childhood center classrooms with some assistance on audio/video access. So, the four classrooms will kind of be around the perimeter, and then there'll be a common area in the middle that the higher ed students from Northwestern can come in there and observe the classrooms, that'll help them with their classes, and the audio/video will allow them to possibly push a button and hear what's happening in the classroom without having to go in and into the classroom and disturb them. And then Northwestern is also interested in piping some of that information to the ALVA campus as well. So, that's what the United Way proposal, grant proposal is helping out with. Wanted to mention to you something that has been in the news for a while now. It dates back to May, I believe, when we got the federal mandate or dictate about the Fair Labor Standards Act increase almost being doubled for those that are treated as hourly workers versus exempt employee workers. And so, the, I just wanted to share a little bit of the detail about that and then how we are affected or not. And so, as of December the 1st, and by the way, there have been 20-some-odd Attorney Generals throughout the country that have filed an injunction on that issue to try to stay that decision taking effect December 1st. But I've been to two different lawyer presentations recently on this issue. Both said that they don't think anything will happen until after the election, and they didn't see any way that there would be enough movement on that to delay the December 1 implementation date. So, the December 1 implementation date would effectively cause the new So, the December one implementation date would effectively cause the new numbers to go into effect, and that is the base pay of nine hundred and thirteen dollars per week, or what that equates to is, for a ten-month employee would be a little over thirty-nine thousand dollars, thirty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars. For an eleven-month employee, forty-three, four, and for a twelve-month employee, forty-seven, seven. Unless, so we would have to treat them as hourly unless they could be classified in the professional category, the administrative category, the executive category, or the computer technology category. So, Carl assures me that we don't have anybody that cannot be classified in one of those categories that are currently being exempt employees, correct? So, we think we're okay here. Originally, I was thinking, oh, my gosh, we're going to have to revamp our, a whole lot of things in our business department and our payroll department, but luckily, it looks like we're not going to have to. But I can almost assure you that there are a number of small districts throughout this state that are going to have employees like cafeteria, like child nutrition directors or transportation directors or maintenance directors, people in that type of category that don't necessarily require a certificate that may fall into that category, and so they might have to make some changes that are relatively drastic. But that's the FLSA, Fair Labor Standards Act, changes that are supposed to take effect December the first unless something drastic takes place between now and then. All right, almost done. December fifth, just a reminder that State Superintendent will be here in our community at Enid High School, December fifth, at Enid Hyde, six to seven P.M. We'd certainly invite you to join us for that town hall meeting. She's making her way around the state, there's several of those. I attended a manufacturing STEM Day out at Autry on Friday, October the seventh, and a number of our students went out there to gain some information about that, and I want to commend Brady McCullough and Autry for that whole day. They put a lot of time and effort, and a lot of people came together to put that day on for students in the entire area. It wasn't just our students, they had students from all different kinds of school districts out there, but very beneficial, and it falls right into a number of the goal areas that you heard about tonight. Election Day obviously is November the eighth. Early voting is November third and fourth, eight to six P.M., and November fifth on a Saturday from nine to two, and then Election Day on the eighth. Okay, we finished up our, we had another Vance Air Force Base Partnership Meeting not too long ago, and that was beneficial. We're finally trying to pull that thing together, and we'll eventually have an MOU put together that hopefully, if we can get this Real ID thing figured out federally and statewide, will be beneficial such that we can start taking groups onto the campus, and I'm sure that JJ will have a few more comments about that as we move forward to his area here in just a minute. Just a few other reminders there that you have in front of you. After fall break, we will begin the implementation of our random drug testing for extracurricular activities, and you've got a handout there. I'm not going to go through all this, but these are the steps that will take place for the screening process, and I wanted you to have a copy of that just in case you get any questions moving forward. One thing we're going to monitor as we go through that process is how much of a problem having only the hair sample is versus another option, and if that becomes too big of a problem, well, then we, second semester, we might implement either the hair sample or the urine sample, depending on what the parents or the kid's choice is there, but same end result. You've got the October third enrollment date handout there in front of you, and I was pleasantly surprised that we're now up to eight thousand and seventy-nine. We had a high watermark last year of eighty-one hundred, so that's not quite as far off as I thought. We might be down because of the oil and gas decline, so that's good. We are beginning the development process for next year's school calendar, seventeen, eighteen, and we have one school board member representative on that, and I believe Tori has agreed to do that again this year. You did it last year, didn't you? Yeah, so appreciate you helping us out on that. So, as we get a little further into that, we'll be bringing you those recommendations a little bit later. The next handout you have there that says, "Enid Public Schools District Plan for Foster Care," it says draft, it has draft stamped on it. I'm just giving that to you for information. I'm sure you need some good bedtime reading there, but this is an outgrowth of the new ESSA, what replaced No Child Left Behind, the ESSA implementation, and that is being trickled down to the states and the states down to the districts. So, just about everything you see in this draft plan, we already do in our district for foster children, like if they need transportation, we transport them, transport them to school. Basically, we educate the kids that reside in our district, and so this is yet another example of school districts having to jump through hoops and put a plan together unnecessarily, in my opinion, especially given the fact that we already meet the needs of foster students that are in our school district. But nevertheless, we're required to put a plan together, so Viv's been working on that plan. I wanted you to have a draft copy of it because next month, at the November board meeting, we're going to present to you a final copy and ask for the required action of approval on that plan. Kind of falls under the same category as homeless student. If a kid were deemed as homeless in our school district, we're going to educate them, so if they're classified as a foster home student, we're going to educate them as well, so it is what it is, but we got to put a plan together. Let's see here. Jeff already mentioned our EPS at day that comes up on January the fourth. One of the good things about that is it allows our employees to hear from our employees and be educated by our employees on all things technology-related, and so sometimes it comes better from somebody that you're a colleague with than it is going to Oklahoma City and hearing from somebody that you don't know. And the last item you have there is another topic that they've already talked about when we were talking about textbooks and open educational resources. These obviously are freely accessible and open licensed documents. We have begun working on that. Broken Arrow has done a lot of work on this, and the second page that is stapled to that, you can see that some of our folks are already beginning to work on that, and they already have timelines sketched out as to what will happen when, continuing that effort moving forward. Just a reminder that our Teacher of the Year celebration comes up on Wednesday, December seventh. That's going to be at Prairie View at five P.M., and we would certainly love to have you there for that. That's the extent of my superintendent report, sir.
Do I dare ask any questions for Dr. Floyd?
That was lengthy, I realize, but we had a lot to cover.
Good report.
Thank you.
Good report. All right, no further questions for Dr. Floyd. We'll move on to regular business. Item four A, one through eight, I would entertain as one motion unless you need to pull something else separately.
I move approve.
Second. Motion by Colin, second by Matt.
Just one comment on this. Board members, you can see that this is the first month that we are including the encumbrances in there, and then Carl's included a few transferences of activity funds and that type of thing as well in there, so I think this, including those type of routine items, I think can help us expedite the board meeting agenda, and Lord knows, after the superintendent report, we need to expedite some things on the board meeting agenda, and I see a lot of heads nodding. Yes, thank you. But what that necessitates also is that it will be helpful if you can take a brief look at that ahead of the meeting and then holler at Carl if you have any questions about those such that he can look up the answer for you in advance, but since they are routine, I think it'll help us including that on the consent agenda, so.
Yeah, and since this is a little new, feel free to take your time and look through.
Yeah, I think you did have a few questions already, didn't you? Or Matt had a few questions that he called in with, so appreciate that.
Amanda, are you good? I see you scrolling. We can give you some time, because this, I mean, okay, all right. Well, then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. District's financial report for September two thousand and sixteen. Carl?
This is activity through the end of the month of September. Would call your attention to the one-page summary that basically has one line per fund for our appropriated funds. Look briefly at the general fund of the fifty-nine point nine five eight million that we have estimated on the official estimate of needs. We've collected thus far a little over fourteen point eight million, and we have encumbered approximately fifty-one million after accruing all payroll costs for the year. Our current unencumbered balance then is eight point six million, and our current cash balance is about six point nine million. That will dwindle as we move farther into the fall before we get into ad valorem tax season, which is our largest collection item other than state aid. And of course, that comes in, in basically a few payments from January through March, and so we have to be prepared for that with an adequate fund balance. And I'd also like to underscore the fact that the fund balance allows us to be somewhat insulated from revenue failures that happen at the state level and cause us not to collect as much state aid as we have been promised in our appropriations. Won't go through all of the funds. You can pretty much look at them. The green columns are collections, and the pink columns are obligations. If you look at the bottom two rows, those are our monies that are kept in trust for us at the Bank of Oklahoma in Tulsa for our construction program. There are other funds, for example, Fund Thirty-One and Thirty-four are general obligation bonds, but Fund Seventy-One and Seventy-Two, highlighted in blue down there at the bottom, are our revenue bond funds that were approved in two thousand and ten, which we have an unencumbered balance there of about thirty-five thousand, just about have all of that spent. And then Fund Seventy-Two, which we just received in August, about sixty point one million dollars there, and we have yet an unencumbered balance of about fifty-six thousand. As the architects complete our projects and we prepare to go out to bid and enter into contracts, that money will be consumed rather quickly, and then it will be paid out as the construction is done. We'll obligate the full cost of those contracts upfront when we enter into an agreement for construction contracts. So, that being said, are there any questions about the financial report? If not, I'd certainly appreciate a motion for approval.
Move approve.
Second.
Second by Amanda. Any discussion or questions for Carl? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, financial report approved. Item C.
The next item is the annual election resolution, which as we number our resolutions is number six hundred and thirty. We do have two offices that are up for election this year, and they are office number one and number six, which are Matt and Kyle respectively. Of course, our voters approved the millage on a continuing basis several years ago, so depending on whether or not there are any other individuals that file besides our, hopefully, incumbents, we may or may not incur election expenses. If there was not to be anyone that filed against either Matt or Kyle, and they both filed, then we would not have an election and would save the expense of manning all of those precincts. Recommend approval of this resolution, and this will be one thing that Kyle will need to get signed afterwards.
Move approve.
Second.
Motion by Colin, second by Tori, discussion?
We might need to add amendment that you cannot go and look for opposition.
Carl, will you kind of, just so everybody knows when the election is and...
The filing period begins the fifth of December and runs for the last three days of that week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and the poll, the election board is open, that's where you file, from eight to five every day of those three days, and then the actual election is on Valentine's Day this year, on February fourteenth.
Are you wanting to make sure that you get at least seven votes by having him do that?
So, December fifth is the first day to file.
And we're also required to put it in the paper.
Yes, there'll be a public notice, and then we'll also do a press release that makes everyone aware of this, and the resolution itself and the notice shows the boundary lines for those districts, and if there's anyone that has any questions about those, I can use MapQuest to verify.
Why do we have to vote on this each, each year?
You just have to officially call for the election and approve the dates that are in that first item there of just what we said, the election filing dates and the, it's just a requirement that the board has to take action such that somebody can't say that they weren't aware of it or they didn't know about it, and that type of thing.
And I will in turn file this fully executed resolution with verification that it was published in the legal notices. That's what I file with the election board, and that sets up the ballot, depending on whoever signs up for, registers for candidacy. There could also be a possibility that the cycle might be broken, so to speak. This year, we happen to have two four-year terms that are coming up on our regular cycle. Of course, there's seven members on the board, so three years, we have normally two offices that are open, and then there's a fourth year where we only have one. But sometimes, if someone resigns from the board, we'll have someone gets appointed, and then they'll have to run the very next election period because the term that they were appointed to is more than half of the term. So, we've had as many as three offices on the ballot at one time or open for registration at one time.
Carl, am I correct in stating that they have to live in the district they represent, but they're voted on city-wide or district-wide? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Good point.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, resolution six thirty passes. And now the MOU for the Good Shepherd Catholic School for Project Oasis.
The Good Shepherd Catholic School operates a campus right next to Mercy Hospital that specializes in working with students with autism. They've developed quite a program for professional development for special education teachers that deal with autistic students, and they have selected Enid and specifically Hayes Elementary and specifically, I believe, Amy Tilke to receive some training from this Oasis program, and then she will in turn, through the Train the Trainer program, share those, that knowledge with our people. So, they are working with the State Department to spread this Oasis training program district-wide. Again, they selected Enid, then they interviewed several school sites that had autistic classes, and then selected Hayes to be the recipient of this. So, this is our memorandum of understanding through which these services will be delivered. It'll be a three-year program, and we recommend approval of this MOU.
We would hope that that program, that they'll have success there, and then we can expand it to other campuses from there, so I hope that's the case.
I have a motion.
Move we approve. I cannot say that.
Motion by Tori, second by Willa Jo, discussion?
An interesting side note that I was chatting with Dr. Floyd about just before the meeting, Amy Tilke... Amy Tilke is our first homegrown teacher to have attended college on the Lita Core Educator Scholarship. She got a four-year scholarship to become a teacher and came back home and went to work for us and has developed into an outstanding special ed teacher. So she's a homegrown, she happens to be Amy Trojan's daughter. So she was the very first recipient of the Lita Core Memorial Scholarship.
Growing our own, that's good.
Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. All right, looks like now we're going to get the schedule of the Board of Education meeting for calendar year 2017.
We are required by law to file by the 15th of December our schedule of meetings for the coming calendar year. And these dates roughly correspond to the dates that we met this past year. Dr. Floyd and I reviewed it and moved a couple so they avoid some federal holidays and make it a little bit better for our employees to be able to be with their children on federal holidays. So we're recommending this schedule to be approved and if the board so chooses to approve it, I will send a letter to our new county clerk tomorrow to get those registered with the clerk, which makes them our legal schedule for the coming calendar year.
Good.
Move approve.
Second.
Motion by Colin, second by Amanda. Any discussion?
Question?
Go ahead.
It was my understanding that we were to have our planning meetings quarterly and that's not the way it's scheduled on here. I don't know if somebody decided to change it or what.
Well, they started out quarterly, but then we dropped one and then, then we dropped a second one.
I wasn't aware of the quarterly thing. This is just the way we've done it since I've been here, is we had one in February and we had one in August. Were you guys doing it differently before?
We had done it quarterly, but this is...
Yeah, it was quarterly, but...
I wasn't aware of that, but it didn't matter to me if this...
Well, we can always call if we have something that you think needs our attention, you can always call.
Yeah, I think that's certainly a good point. If we, especially as we get into all these construction projects and everything, if there's something that I think the whole board would benefit in getting involved in, we, we might have a call board meeting for that. But yeah, we just kept it the same way as we've been doing it since I've been here and that's the reason we've got the two planning sessions you see there are laid out for February the 6th and then the other one, August the 7th. And then we certainly can infuse some more at a later time if we need to.
We made sure the meeting in August doesn't conflict with meet the teacher.
Meet the teacher.
When school's starting.
I believe we did. That is August the 21st. And we, oh, we don't have the calendar developed yet, but that'll be one of the stipulations. We'll give them this such that they try to avoid that.
There's a lot of events that haven't been scheduled.
I did, I'm sitting here trying to like screenshot this to make sure I save it to...
There you go, you're, you're on that calendar. Yeah, take care of that for us. Looks like theoretically we will do opening convocation August of 2017 on Friday the 11th and then we'll have some professional development that following week and probably the first day of school might be 16th, Wednesday the 16th. And then meet the teacher, then that would necessitate meet the teacher probably on Monday the 14th or somewhere in there.
How do we start a week earlier than we'll, is that, when do we start this?
I think we started on the middle, middle of that week this year.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Calendar passes. All right, now for the construction management with Hinson Construction.
We are asking that the board go ahead and award the construction management at risk contract to Hinson Construction Company for renovations to Eisenhower Elementary School. We are, as Michael Shuck indicated, trying to fast-track this one so we can get all of the subcontractors identified and all of their people that might need to work on that site apply for and receive a base ID so that they can get access to the work on the project. So we do have all of design work completed, the specs are finished, we've already advertised for bid and we do intend to do this through a construction management at risk contract, which basically means the bids that we'll take will be for the trades and Hinson will assist us in opening and reviewing those. And then after all of those bids are received, they may bid on some of the parts of that and self-perform is the term that's used in the construction industry. Once those are all revealed, then they will give us a guaranteed maximum price for the project and that will come back to the board for final approval. But we do need to designate them as the construction manager at risk at this point to continue their relationship with the architects in developing the costs of the project. So recommend approval of a contract with Hinson to do the Eisenhower renovations as construction manager at risk. Might remind the board that we've done a large, large project through this delivery system for construction. The high school renovations that Hinson did for us, the complete remodel of the inside of Enid High School in our 2010 bond issue was done through construction management at risk as opposed to the more traditional Competitive Bidding Act in which we use a general contractor that's selected through the low bid process. If anyone has any questions about that, we are working with Eric Nelson with Rosenstein Fisten Ringold to finalize the language for the construction management at risk contract, which is a modification of the standard AIA, that's American Institute of Architects contract between the construction manager and the district. So we're having a telephone conference tomorrow morning to finalize the actual agreement. So if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, but we are recommending approval of this.
And the reason we need action on this tonight is such that we can go ahead and get started on that and expedite that project as they alluded to earlier. Hopefully, we can get that done by mid-January.
Move approve.
Second.
Motion by Willa Jo, second by Amanda. Any more discussion? Carl, I've seen, I mean, school districts are doing, using construction managers all over.
Yeah, that's, that's the exclusive method that Autry Tech uses. They have a, they have an architect that they use for all of their projects and they have a construction manager, a construction firm that they use for all of their projects. Happens to be Hinson, the architect happens to be easily.
And this probably won't be the only project that we utilize that for.
We anticipate using this a lot in this, this 2016 series of bond projects. We did get burned a time or two on, on the low bid contractor in our last series of construction projects. We had, had one contractor, no offense, out of Texas, that was really a ringer.
We won't be using them again?
No, absolutely not.
All right.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next item is the contract with KKT Architects.
KKT is an architectural firm that did very well in the overall selection process that we did when we selected the architects for the majority of our projects. They have expressed interest in assisting us with some of the smaller project on an all con, excuse me, an on-call basis. Some examples of some of the kinds of things that they would do the design work and coordinate the construction of would be the awning at Hayes, the expansion of parking at Prairie View and the cubbies at several elementary schools, as well as doing a wall through the library at Glenwood Elementary School to kind of divide that up into more classroom computer space as opposed to the open concept that that was originally designed for. So recommend approval of extending a contract to KKT Architects to assist us with some of these on-call projects.
Got a motion?
I make the motion, move we approve.
By Tori?
Second.
Second by Matt. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Any new business?
No, sir.
All right, moving on. Colonel Luchinsky, comments?
Yeah, just a couple. Dr. Floyd, you'd kind of hinted at the Air Force Community Partnership stuff, just as, I guess, a matter of record, there's about 15 initiatives total that were in that. About a third of those were all education and training issues and the one in particular that we're paying very close attention to is that, that mentorship internship program with Vance Air Force Base and I think we're very close. That MOU's in final coordination now, so I think we're about done. Is that...
Getting close, yeah.
Yeah. So again, I appreciate all of your very personal attention that you've given to that, so that's, that's great, so thank you. And then also on the Real ID Act, we've talked about this basically the last three board meetings, but that, there is going to be some impact there. I appreciate you guys moving Eisenhower up because that is going to impact the construction. We will, in some form or fashion, we will drag that across the finish line no matter what happens. So we will figure that out. As we go through this process though, I would anticipate, just knowing what our process has been, is we bring contractors, construction contractors on the base, inevitably as we get the list of names, there's always one or two of those folks that can't make it through that vetting process. So as we run into those pitfalls, as we work the construction in Eisenhower, just make me the connection point there and we'll, we'll start working through that.
Okay, good.
But I anticipate problems and at this point, the Real ID Act, it's not going to be resolved on the federal side, it's going to have to be resolved at the state side and there's no indication that there's going to be any legislative action taken on this until the very earliest in mid-January is what I'm hearing. And at that point...
Yeah, because they don't even come into session until that time and it may be closer to February, yeah, the beginning of February.
Yes, and because they've already passed legislation that says they are specifically not going to be in compliance, they have to undo that before they can...
They have to undo that and then they have to pass basically an emergency clause to expedite the implementation. So, you know, we're mid-February, probably end of February before they can even remotely get that done.
Right. So what we're hoping is, once they get through that process, even though we won't see any real changes, the fact that the legislation passed, we're hoping that the Department of Defense kind of views that as progress and we'll keep our fingers crossed, but we're going to be paying very close attention and especially when it comes to the construction with Eisenhower, so if there's any issues, I'll work through those personally.
Appreciate it.
I think that might be a very prominent topic at our first legislative breakfast too.
Yeah, I was in a meeting recently with Chad Caldwell and Senator Anderson and both of them have already, well, we had Chris Binge at our meeting out at Autry last week, Secretary of State, who's about to move into a chief of staff role for the governor and both of them had already contacted him about it and so it's on the radar now.
Yeah, there was a meeting about, it was probably three weeks ago now, where the state adjutant general actually hosted all of the installations in Oklahoma to kind of, to basically see what those impacts were going to be and all these issues got, got brought up and they talked a little bit to the, hey, this is how we think we're going to get through this, but it's not going to be pretty.
What, did you get the pizza delivery boy issue solved?
No, that is the worst problem that we're going to have.
I can see that.
There is no hope there, so.
Man, not, not getting pizzas delivered onto the base could be an issue.
Yep. But all that, all that aside, we'll, we'll work very hard to, to get through this and if anything pops up again, just use me as the, the contact.
Appreciate it.
Do they get considered, like the construction people, do they get considered Enid Public School employees or would they be considered Hinson employees?
They'll be considered contractor employees and they'll get vetted just the exact same way that we vet our, our contractors, no matter where they go on the base to, to do that work, so.
Do they still have to be in the...
Yeah, they'll still, they'll, they'll still get that initial background check to make sure because of the requirement that we can't have any convicted felons on federal property working, which tends to be an issue sometimes.
Just so you know, they can't be on school property either, so.
That's right.
That's not a problem.
Just as a, kind of a, one final question on that, was there a clause that was in the contract that went out? We, we actually bury that, and I'd say bury it, we put that in the language upfront so that those contractors...
Ours is upfront, they're notified in the, in the bidding notice that they have to comply, they have to, they have to be not only non-convicted of a felony, but there's can be no sex offense or no violent offense under the Mary Rippey Act. So there's three affidavits that they have to, to be vetted on, to get on school property.
Okay, if, that's, that's actually going to line up exactly with the criteria, so we may not have any issues, which would be good news, so.
JJ, as always, appreciate your help and comments. Thanks. Board comments, questions? Next regular meeting, Monday, November 14th at 6:00. And with that, do we need an executive session?
Yes, but it won't be very long.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
I know.
To go into executive session.
And you keep believing.
Move we go into executive session.
Motion by Tori?
Second.
Second by Ernie. Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tie goes to the old man.